At this time, if everyone will please stand for our prayer and pledge allegiance to God. Commissioner Horns for the presentation.
Let's pray. Gracious Lord, we are blessed to be in your presence today, Lord. Father, we just thank you for looking after our nation, our state, Lord, and our county. Lord, we ask of your deliberation here with us today, Lord, with discernment, your wisdom, and our decision-making, Lord, that whatever we do, what would benefit the people of the county. And we just thank you for your protection and your guidance, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to file the recommended with Gates County Board of Commissioners for November 7th, 2018, to order. The first item of the agenda is approval of the minutes for October 6th, 2018. Entertaining the motion.
Second.
A motion has been made in session. Most discussion, is there, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, before you is our agenda. At this time, I would like to make two, one addition to the agenda on the new business, number sixteen, oh, number eleven, excuse me. Number eleven, funds for the audit firm. Additional funds for the audit firm. That will be number eleven.
If I may, we do not have any closed session business.
Okay, there are those minutes when we're doing this.
You can wait if you'd like. I have no other business other than those.
We could just win those. Okay. Entertaining a motion concerning the.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Okay, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, delegations.
Just announce delegations.
Okay, girls, okay, a nice delegation. Our first is to the Gates County Historical Society, presentation for the donation for the Gates County Historic Courthouse. Mrs. Walker, I believe I saw her up here. Maybe you'll come forward.
Wherever you want to stand and do your presentation or ask your parents to take your picture and I'll probably stick up here.
No, she didn't have to talk. She checked.
No, wait, what's that way he had? You can still talk to her and tell.
But this might look a little stiff or something. But Jack, that would, we.
Thank you very much.
Well, I see that on this chair.
And would you like to tell for those who might not have been here last time, what it's for?
Well, at the historical society, years ago, I cannot tell you before I got involved in the historical society, the state, Gay, Gates County, the historical society, hundred thousand dollars to work on the Bad Ure Room in the courthouse. And over the years, we used things, and of course, they did stuff, and now they haven't turned all right. But anyway, we've given twenty thousand dollars towards the West Wing of the courthouse in nineteen thirty-six courthouse. Eighteen thirty-six courthouse. So this is the money that we have given candid help towards to have that fund.
It's me and Miss Walker.
Thank you. You don't need to be in the room. Unless you understand what I'm saying.
It's of interest that original hundred thousand dollars for the West Wing was given to the courthouse to support the Bad Ure Museum, Bad Ure Force, and native of Gates County, Secretary of State for fifty years. His family had given that to memorabilia. And so, in the process of restoration of that room, there came the issue of the wall, the cracks in the wall. And I've done numerous studies, it was determined it was better to rebuild that West Wing. And so, the historical society has given a generous contribution and to that. And we'll accept all contributions from anyone.
Today.
Okay. Next, a nice delegate is Arnold Bright. Come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Arnold Bright. I'm from Sunbury Volunteer Fire Department. I am president of the Gates County Firefighters, who are now in addition to EMS Association. Coming to you today, twenty years after the first time I met with the board about talking about our fire things and how time goes by. There is a misconception in some parts of the county and maybe by these board members. This is not a tax, this is a fee, that is assessed per household, per business. And in 1998, when we started writing this, it was vetted, it talked through with all departments. And in 1999 is when it finally went to the General Assembly to be approved. These funds have to be approved by the General Assembly. The first part is you, the board, have, with this would be amendments to the existing House Bill nine, nine hundred. You would have to make amendments to that to adjust the fees. Then, the General, the House would approve it, and they would then cross it over to the Senate, and the Senate would approve it, and then come back to the county for the presentation. This takes a little bit of time, and that's why we're here today. We might have a few firefighters in here, other than myself, but I'm the one that's got the authorization and the privilege to come and talk to you about this today. I do have a handout, and it's, one part of it's easy, the other part is a little more detailed. This fee down is divided into mathematical equation for each fire department between, it's not an equal division, it was agreed upon in 1999, all the fire departments that have a fee structure to set and approved by the board. Sunbury gets a little bit more than the rest of the departments. Gatesville gets a little bit less because of the town putting in funding for that department. Sunbury operates two stations, and therefore, it takes a little bit more money. We have to have two of everything. What we're requesting to do is basically start off where the House, back in ninety-nine, kind of chopped us down a little bit. We'd like to have an additional amount of money. This money is used for capital and in some operating expenses. I think in the beginning, there might have been some misinterpretation of how the money's to be used, whether it's in savings accounts or however. I will say too, that some areas of the county are better at donating and giving to the fire departments than other areas of the county are. And that's how it is in any organization you see or have anything to do with. But now, over twenty years, prices have gone up to the point that we're, it's getting a lot more expensive, and some departments are having a hard time making it. We're making it, but not that much. The fee structure, that's up to you and the board. We have talked with the local government, Federal Credit Union, I have done that several times, and the Alamo Firemen's Association, which I'm president of, and Eastern Firemen's Association, I'm a member of. State and local government, Federal Credit Union has the best financing, and they work with the best fire departments and EMS organizations. We have also had folks come from the Agriculture Department. In Gates County, we don't really qualify for that. But local government, Federal Credit Union is the best one for financing options. At the price of fire apparatus and turnout gear and safety stuff that we have to have by purring FPA, it is not law, as a guideline, that if something should happen to one of your firefighters or one of the members, or you're involved in a wreck, one to call, the standard would be held to would be NFPA standard. So these standards change every six years, and this is based on the new changes. So that's why you see an increase in funds. Back in 1998, a new fire engine, like we use in the county, was a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Today, it's changed up to three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And every year, we wait, purchase a new one, is you can add between four and eight percent price increase. So that's right much. I've listed a two-door, a four-door, a custom cab, a tanker, and a vacuum tanker for those prices. And their current prices add to two thousand nineteen miles, an average from three vendors. That doesn't account everything that goes on. Turnout coats and pants, back in 1998, were nine hundred dollars. Now, they're twenty-three hundred dollars. Used to, a hood that we have to protect our head was twenty-five dollars, and now they're a hundred dollars a piece, and each person has to have two because of cancer. Every time you go in a fire, you're going to have to do with a put-on mouth, you come out there, it's clean and decontaminated. Helmets were forty-five dollars. Now, they're two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Those in turnout gear have to be replaced every ten years. And the reason for have to replace them, it comes back again to the authority of jurisdiction. If the fire chief says, no, we're not going to replace it, then you don't have to replace it until one of your firefighters has cancer, somebody gets hurt, and then workers' conflict will come in, the federal governments will come in, and after they finish with the fire chief, it's the legal, bang, bang, whoever else you want to want on the call. So we have to pretty much abide by NFPA guidelines. Some loose equipment on there that I've got on that two, three-page handout. Radios, when we first started, we have a member of your board that's been in a long time, radios were a hundred dollars. Now, handheld radios are three thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars to be compliant with P-25. There's a new standard coming into effect this year for the cancer policy to protect our firefighters. If we do not wash our turnout gear after we come back from a fire, or have a spare set of gear to give them to use or set to set themselves, if they were to get cancer, and we don't have these things in place, they're not eligible for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar one-time payment for cancer. Try to explain that to a family that says, hey, my husband or my wife or my child got cancer, it's because of your department not having the equipment. So this is something to look out for the members. We have to test our air, our air compressors and our bottles yearly. We have to have workers' conflict insurance, and the figure I have here seems high, but it's a five-year projected out for our department, eighteen thousand forty dollars a year, just for usual, and that's workers' conflict and all things going on with it. We have to test our equipment. That cost us in Sunbury last year, but we have double of everything, it cost us thirty-six hundred dollars. We use two thousand eighty-nine dollars for the fuel. We just received a new tanker on the FEMA ramp. It's seven years, starting this year with NFPA, nineteen eleven, we have to replace those tires every seven years. They're eight hundred dollars a piece, and there's ten tires on that truck. So you can see the expenses that goes up again. Same way applies to the engines. Now, every engine, equipment truck, or whatever responds, has to replace the tires every seven years. And that's to call the number of vehicles that have been involved, their wrecks, rollovers, inability to stop, the lawsuits. This past year, there were twenty-five thousand eight hundred firefighters injured, five thousand five hundred killed, there were three thousand civilians killed this past year in collisions with fireworks. They're big, they're heavy, and they don't stop yet, so they come up with this new rule about tires. It's not cheap, but I can preference now to say that due to the foresight of the fire departments, three of our fire departments now ISO rated departments. Sunbury and Ure are ISO V, which is a tremendous savings to the homeowners. Gatesville is an ISO VI. Hobbsville is getting ready to be reviewed this spring, and they're hoping to at least get an ISO VII. And Gates is looking at trying to maybe get on board and see what it has to get, become an ISO certified station. That is not a cheap process. When they come in and look, certain things you have to have, certain kind of equipment you have to have, but it do just to save money. The savings to the county, calculated based on all the insurance agencies around here, we're saving an average of three point three million dollars a year to the homeowners and businesses. I can't really explain that number. I called all the insurance agencies in the county, I've talked to DICO, I've talked to Farm Bureau, I've talked to, I forget about twenty of you, to get their average. This ISO rating, me personally, this time, when we went to an ISO VII from a nine, I saved two hundred and sixty-five dollars. This past year, my homeowner's insurance went down to another hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-eight cents from being that on ISO V. We know also that everybody in the county is not in a five-mile district, some are in a six-mile district, but they're still receiving a good substantial fire insurance decrease. And then there are those people that live outside of the five-mile or six-mile radius. And it would be probably almost astronomically impossible to get everybody in a fire rated district, just by the way our county is laid out and the number of roads. But everybody still will have a fire engine or a fire department personnel going to call, a rush fire, a ref, or whatever. So everybody is still receiving something from the departments. As you look at this, as you think about what to do, again, we come back to we're saving people money. And this is not a tax, this is a fee. We project in ten years out, it might be better to go along with the General Assembly, I don't know, I'll leave that up to you. But we're looking, starting something now, maybe at five years, and then again, in ten years, another increase. And it is, all the departments are on board. Department-wise, per their one vote per department. Every member of every department might not be on board with it, that's all they think sometimes might be too expensive with the tax, they don't understand it. But when we worked with the General Assembly in nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, this was the best way to go, we felt, for the X County. It doesn't hurt farmers, it doesn't hurt the business owners, and the business owners actually receive the biggest benefit on their taxes, such as the nursing homes, they own all the taxidermy, fire insurance, they receive the big, big cut of that. But we would hope that you would look at this, and you'd be, to be with any of us from the fire departments, to go over any questions you'd like to ask me now or later on, we'd be glad to help you with those questions.
What is the current household assessment, uh, fire fee right now? I pay it, but I don't know exactly what it is.
It's depending on the value of your house, it's forty dollars, fifty dollars, sixty dollars, or business seventy-five. And that should be, I've got a column in that X County Fire Fee. There's two thousand three hundred and thirty-nine households that are paying forty, three thousand eight hundred and eighty-five are paying fifty, eleven are paying sixty, and a hundred and seventy-three businesses are paying seventy-five dollars.
Okay. So that's an essential assessment. And what, what are you asking to go up to? Who do you want to do?
Whatever you would like to give, yes, because the General Assembly is involved. This, the figures we have, whatever you decide, let's say you, that's where we started at twenty years ago. And the General Assembly, Representative Hunter and Senator Balance cut us in half, thereabouts. So if we're going to do it on a pro rate, and then come back five years from then, and come back at ten years, the sixty, seventy-five, ninety, and a hundred and thirteen. And there, a lot of things affect the big businesses. Used to produce chicken houses for a big rating deficit for the fire departments. Now, the nursing homes and any structure over thirty-two foot that might be housing people would cause the expense of the fire department to go up. In Sunbury, you're in here just as a reference, and it's not set in stone, if that building ever proceeds to go do what they're looking to do, there's a very real possibility that Sunbury would have to purchase a ladder truck to do rescuing of that building. And now, new ladder truck, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, this is part. So that better give you an idea of what. The nursing homes is frequent, they're built a little bit different, they don't affect this as bad, but Gates House, I think Sunbury and Gatesville, and the Gates House, twelve times district, might be in one of them now, on fireworks. And they're only paying a hundred and seventy-five dollars for the service.
Your one hundred and seventy-three figure up here, that's businesses?
That's businesses, but these are from the tax office.
Yeah, is it businesses, churches?
Churches, I think. I don't remember if they're exempt or not, I think they pay fifty or something like that. It might be a business.
And so, the eleven figure that you have there?
There are homes that are over, on paper, I think they're like over five hundred thousand dollars for something like thirty-five thousand dollars.
Actually, they're multifamily on those, that we do have a duplex.
There is two duplexes.
Yeah, there's just a handful of those in the county, those structures.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am, sir.
I would, both of you make a motion, it's a pleasure to have this item put on our budget for budget review at the time, to make our budget as goddamn good, for the review items for budget consideration. Would you allow any review at that time? We could decide whether we want to make this increase in how much, and go with the information again, and see what we can justify.
We do not set this in our budget. This is set by the legislature, so it would have to be approved by them.
Before we do the budget.
Right.
And the General Assembly meeting in January.
Yes, the General Assembly meeting in January, then have to have it approved across House by April, into the Senate by May to approve.
There's a deadline, like, local deals, you know.
And if I may, I've had a few people ask a few questions when they saw this on the agenda, and they said, before the commissioners took any action, they would like to see the requirements of the NFPA in writing presented to you. They also would like to know the make and model of every department's trucks and the miles that are on it and the ages. So if you, with your permission, I can contact all of the fire departments to get that information. And just so you are aware, we still do not have one of the volunteer fire departments reports that we request each year, so we can see how they are spending their money.
I think there's some information that we need to get before we.
Study.
The study, so we will, I think, need to instruct our manager to ascertain that information for us, that we can have a study, and a study of the issue.
Would, would January be a possible date to take a first look? Are they too optimistic?
I mean, I can contact all of the fire departments this week, have them get everything. I would think they'd already have that, it's just the idea of making copies.
I've already downloaded that information.
As a reference to the, in that PDA.
I would expect that to come from him.
I've got him.
Awesome.
I've been dealing with those for the last two.
Yeah, I think January, because December is a, we don't have a meeting number. I think January, because local deals to the General Assembly, there is always a date, but it's not the first of the, right, the first days of January.
Probably in January, if I was.
Well, anyway, we can check with the calendar of the General Assembly, but we'll get, got to get more information, can't make decisions without information.
Do you have a motion for?
Just table it until discussion, how we don't have, just put it on the agenda for January.
Good.
Yes, Commissioner Free.
Yes, I have one question, was surprised, well, actually, two questions if you would. One, have we had any dialogue with the representatives or senators in our area as pertaining to this?
No, sir, not at this time. And we did the last time around, I don't know how I really would say this without being truthful like it was, we had to interject the governor's office to get our representatives at, at that time, to back us. And the only reason I know that is because I made a phone call, I went up to the governor.
And the other thing, do we have any four-story homes in Gates County?
That's not allowed by our zoning ordinance at the, now.
Yes, we do, tactically speaking, we, anything over thirty-two feet is considered. Want NFPA, want the state office of fire marshal, want the judges, Sunbury's got seventeen.
Not a, but.
Not four-story.
Not four-story house, that's what, that's what I was answering his question. There is not a four-story house, and it's not allowed by zoning.
And not even on all these trucks? Love it down there.
One of the things that, of course, I've been in the county most of my life, and volunteer donations. Years ago, you see a fire sometimes that stops light, holding the bucket, getting donations, you can come to the house.
That's right.
We don't do that anymore.
And I, I think I can address that.
All right, continue with it.
Well, we have a fee now that we tapped the bargain.
Okay, I'll, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. In the past, yes, we did go to the, where it stopped light, we had to boot out, and you might think, then six, five, five, six thousand dollars. Now, that won't even buy the list of turnout gear. Pickpicking, fish fry, whatever, chicken cooking, whatever you do, you sell fifteen hundred plates, you spend all day there, plus you get a hundred hours of training during the year or more, like our department, and you clear forty-five hundred, three thousand dollars. Now, I do know that you're, will pop that fundraiser three or one sometimes for what we do, what we can get on our side of the county. So that's the difference. You just can't make any donations anymore.
Okay, thank you for coming, and we will take this into consideration, we get the information for us in January.
And I can give you any NFPA information you want.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that was all of the nice delegations, unites. Okay, there are none, then moving on to administrative reports, starting with County Manager.
This is for September twentieth through October the nineteenth. Work is still progressing on the wastewater project. At the writing, we had not received reimbursement from EBA. However, we have, since writing of this, received reimbursement from EBA for about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Work is progressing on the historic courthouse. As you can see, it has been rebuilt, floor is to be installed. It was actually installed last week, and they are working on the ceilings and trimwork in the buildings as well. Work will begin on repairing the floor joists on the first floor in November. Diane Hendricks and Warren Curry have been working with Century Leap to ensure all necessary steps are taken for the administrative office building and courthouse to not only have increased bandwidth, but also a new telephone system. This has been several months in the making, and we hope to move forward in December.
This has been several months in the making, and we hope to move forward in December. Sheila Felton began work as a temporary part-time finance technician, also during the month of October. On October fifth, Chair Hoffler and I conducted tours for the Gatesville third graders of the historic courthouse. On October the tenth, the regional planning authority organization, Matt and Kirkford, discussion was held on exploring the projects for funding. Gates County had one project which received points, but it may not be considered for funding because of the cost of twenty-six million dollars. This project is the widening and the shoulder improvements on the NC thirty-seven from Gladden Road in Chawan County to the Virginia Line. The Rural Transportation Advisory Committee voted unanimously to go on record opposing the use of state and federal funds allocated for aviation, bicycle, pedestrian, roads, bridges, transit, and ferry projects for the Harbertown Ferry Project. The RTAC also went on record to oppose the use of the North Carolina Department of Transportation Ferry Division capital improvement and maintenance funds for the purchase, operation, and maintenance of the ferries for the Harbertown Project, as well as oppose the Harbertown Project as becoming a part of the DOT ferry system. A bicycle and pedestrian grant resolution for Elizabeth City was approved, the two thousand nineteen legislative priorities remain the same as two thousand seventeen. DOT provided predictive updates for roads and ferries, and Chair Hoffler was also in attendance at the meeting. Do you have any questions?
Um, let me think, at the beginning, that figure was that six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
From EDA, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, yes.
What's our total budget for our budget?
The wastewater?
Yes.
Let me pull that up. Yes, I'm pulling it up. Now, some of this money, just so you know, as a reminder, will be reimbursed back to the accounts that it came out of, but in order to pay the bills, we've had to move money. So, the total project actually shows as being five million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars.
So, this six hundred and twenty-five is all in portion?
Nine hundred thousand dollars is what we've received from, is what was allocated from EDA. By the time we take out the money that we've moved to cover the money from, that, to cover the bills until we receive reimbursement, the project's back down to, I think it's, I don't have it on this sheet, I think it's four and a half million.
Okay, any, oh, any questions for kind of, like, any of the projects and all? Okay, thank you.
Oh, excuse me, and you had asked last time about Sundery schools, you received an email yesterday from the Hatches, and there's also an email in your pocket from October the fifteenth from Maggie Gray, who's the Regional Director of the Eastern Office for Preservation of North Carolina.
Yes, that was very good.
I think in the future, we'll probably meet with them at some point in time, to, uh, by our money count programs, are they making, we have some issues with grants and so forth, because we don't have family booths, uh, we don't have a pharmacy within one mile, but, uh, they are trying to alternate it, but they, they weren't really specific, as, as we're still not what they're doing.
And I believe in the email, they indicated they'd be very willing to come and talk with us, uh, so we probably need to put them on the agenda at some point.
Yes.
At the first of the year.
Absolutely, next, uh, six, eight months.
Okay, um, Mrs. Lane, back.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We had the opportunity to see the collector's report submitted. I did want to point out, we don't have the prior years, we anticipate in December, as we have a more comparable figure, I will say, and compared to last year, fifteen point three eight, or, excuse me, fifteen point five eight percent collection, we're up beyond that now, at over nineteen percent, so, um, do good work on certainly, our busy season approaches, uh, get those payments in, um, as we expect, there are the tax office. Uh, any other question? There's some good reporting from Zacchaeus, uh, with some funds coming in, as well as those sales that were successfully bidded on, uh, in my report, I included that, those taxpayers who, um, were awarded that bid, those two parcels in the county.
And yes, I take some off the-
Get some back, yes, ma'am.
Two, I acted paying a price.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
On the first page?
Mm-hmm.
Definitely, you got those two thousand eighteen taxable value stuff, with that, just a, just a, you get this list of a higher, bunch of higher totals?
Um, well, actually, that, that, that is for those accounts submitted for audit, that is on a different, uh, yes, sir, with those business personal property, I've simply done that as a, make you aware if you have some phone calls, that's part of the audit program.
Yeah, we're aware by eye.
Yeah, and I, I just got a, the way we're billed now by County Tax Services and submitting all, um, audits, we've been with them since two thousand, we contract out, that was just for your notation of the tiered pricing involved, and to let you know that we're gonna resume that. During my tenure, um, we had some remaining audits that were incomplete, basically, so I did not encumber the funding in the budget, and ahead of getting those accounts resolved. So, now that all of those remaining accounts have been resolved, we'd like to move forward, you know, forward with that audit program.
And these are split, like, randomly?
They are sampling, yes, Manthorpe County, uh-
And then next year, can all sample?
Um, actually, maybe two years down the road, we can, we can look into some.
No, I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking for the protocol.
Uh, we do, it is a random, uh, sampling, we took, we tried to, as you see, with that taxable value that I did reference for you, that is kind of a tiered, uh, pricing range, kind of a, a broad span in the county. Uh, we, we've got some on the low end, if you will, and some of the high end of our businesses, uh, that we do have, but we will begin, uh, you know, kind of resuming that, getting that, looking at those assets reported, some under-reported, perhaps some overstated, that's what the audit would allow us to do, something that in the course of a normal listing year, we may not know about, or people say, well, I didn't list that item of, of business personal, I didn't know I had to, things of that nature, so, we'll be resuming that with County Tax Services. The letters ran out last week, uh, to the taxpayer, letting them know that, of the intent, uh, wanting to have that initial meeting, if you will, uh, by the staff of County Tax Services out of Raleigh, so, I'm looking forward to getting back into that, yes.
Okay, I believe we have one refund.
We do, yes, ma'am, that D and D refund that was, those tax were turned in, uh, for vehicle.
Okay, and all the paperwork is attached to it, uh, they traded in the detail and turned in the license-
Yes, ma'am.
For that, um, do I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Okay, a motion's been made to refund the taxpayer a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents, um, any discussion? Here or not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we pass a, approved. And thank you for the work we did, I know that you have some, um, Mrs. Owens, some power, and I believe you have, what, Miss Morris, how do I say this? Uh, Miss, you may, yes.
That's right, Miss, Miss Betty Morris, that is true.
I was going to tell the sister.
That is right, she, her last day was on the twenty-sixth of, of October, she was grateful those people stopped by and wished her farewell, Chair Hoffler, and she was, uh, kind of, uh, pleased with that and everything, and, and all the turnout, um, we had Shannon Hayes who joined us on this Monday, uh, we're pleased about her addition to our office, um, and look forward to getting trained and cross-trained as we move forward on everything, so, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I know it's a busy time, young.
Yes, ma'am, that's good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, any other department reports that are, questions that commissioners might have? Concerning? Okay.
I don't have any comments on administrative boards, but I would ask a special request of the board, I should have done this at the beginning, but, uh, I ask, uh, such a home group to be here today regarding our old business, and I would like to ask the board if you would, uh, allow our old business number seven to go before a public hearing, so we can address that next.
Okay, you are asking that we, uh, adjust the agenda, include item number seven?
No, and not include, move number seven, make that number six, and then make number six number seven, just reverse the word.
Okay.
The agenda.
Okay. Okay, Mrs. Powell, okay, you asked for that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, uh, if the board allows, move seven to six, and make six there.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll check the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and, okay, all those opposed? Okay, we will do that.
I got one of, I, and addressed this to Lisa more than anybody else, it's called, someone had come to me, this is an item we discussed a few months ago, and that's, that we live in a rural, rural area, and people have farms, and have all these farms, they have chickens, they have pigs, and people coming in don't know that hogs and chickens might not smell like poachers and buffalo, and, and sometimes it's in their subdivision ordinance, and I think we need something more than any subdivision ordinance, although we have a farm deal going on, we do not have anything really a requirement, but I just want you to look into it and see if there's some way to develop a requirement that someone coming in, he built a new house, also has to sign a paper, they realize they might smell something they did not used to.
That is, that's funny.
She's a leader. You're offensive, she is.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I know that there's something going on with the voluntary ag bill that's going on in the county council, and there, there is a radius that's set by general statute by law, that you have to be required to be notified, like, real estate agents and things as they're shopping, um, it's different for a dairy farm, a hog farm, again, I don't know all the ins and outs, but it has to be addressed, whether we address it on a list, and they would have to sign them, we're not quite sure how we will address it, whether it be, hopefully, GIS and the radius, and then it will still have to be a list within, probably the county department, I know Kathy and I talked a little bit about that, so that is being addressed, but it is in the voluntary ag bill that we are, I think, is coming up.
I know, and one of our neighboring counties is part of that subdivision ordinance, and that's fine as far as it goes, but that does not address someone that comes into a house that's already bad, and then after they move into so, an existing property, then they start complaining, and this came a bite, and I think it was, uh, that's in Florida, that someone did exactly this, and sued the farm, and he ended up losing everything he had, farm and all, and, oh, they did, like, no, pigs.
Right, and I know the, the voluntary ag district that, um, the ordinance is being worked on should address that, has to address that, that is one thing that it covers because of the lawsuits that we've been with.
However, I will point out that I contacted the school of government in two thousand seventeen, and that according to Amy Wall, who specializes in animal control ordinances, as well as DHHS and other matters, she says, um, a reasonable argument can be made in ordinance prohibiting animals also, is prohiben, could be prohibited, and could violate their rights if they want to move into a house as well and own livestock as pets, even if they're not on a bona fide farm, just to throw out from the other angle, so when you're addressing that, you cannot say, if you live here, unless it's the homeowners association, which is not the zoning, you cannot say if you build in this area, you cannot own it.
But there, I understand you, Lisa, to say that there is a general statute currently addressing some likely issue.
Yeah, under the voluntary act bill, I think you're going to be looking at that soon, if I'm not mistaken, that has been addressed, and it is addressed in that, and there's a radius for each, like I said, dairy farms are different, and it, hopefully, we can have that radius on GIS, or again, a list, and they will be notified once they want to come in, I guess, we'll figure out a process, is what they were saying, um, and, and we have definitely been addressing that, and it is in there specifically, with like a three-mile radius, or a one-mile radius, so they would be informed, and that protects the people who have the farms, and the smell that could possibly be coming from that, that people are aware when they move there.
Okay.
Well, I realize that people are about to hurt them.
No, they won't. You're right.
Like, you want open spaces, you get the good and the bad smells.
Yes, ma'am, yes, that's right.
There's from the board, um, something, you may be aware of, of this, over near area, right near the, um, Chawan Gates County line, there's a sign over there that says, this is a voluntary ag district, have you seen a sign?
Yes, of course, same has to.
Yeah, that's what we discussed a few months, we'll put it, sign, as you come in, get time to, uh, but, to be a volunteer.
It's the first time I've seen a sign that, a week ago.
Very much those kinds. Yeah, so, uh, thank you, it's something we need to look into, or we are looking into.
And that will be on the, you table it until December.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, at this time, an article of interest, um, the governor of the state, Governor Cooper, has issued a proclamation, uh, for November to be adoption month, and Mrs. Holliday, who is the head of, um, DSS, has asked that we read this, that people are aware that this is adoption month, wonderful to give a home to a child, um, and it's a wonderful, for parents to have a child, uh, to, uh, another child in their home, if they don't have, if they have children or a child in a home, if they don't have children. So, Commissioner Owens just want to read the proclamation.
State of North Carolina, Roy Cooper, Governor, Adoption Month, two thousand and eighteen, by the Governor of the State of North Carolina, a proclamation, wherein the annual observance of Adoption Month celebrates all North Carolina adoptions, and whereas the two thousand and eighteen national theme for the Adoption Month is, in their own words, lifting up youth voices, North Carolina families are encouraged to share their hearts and homes with older youth at risk of aging, assigning out of foster care, waiting to be adopted, and, whereas, every child deserves the opportunity to grow up in a loving, stable family, and adoption is one way to build a family, and whereas, caring adults and committed families can make all the difference in the lives of young people, sibling groups, children with special needs, and teenagers, and whereas, eight thousand, nine hundred, seventy-one children in North Carolina are currently in foster care, and one thousand, five hundred twenty-eight children were adopted in two thousand and seventeen, and whereas, each county department of social services in the state of North Carolina works diligently to place foster children in adoptive homes, and whereas, North Carolina Kids Adoption and Foster Care Network within the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Social Services recruits approved adoptive families with a hope of placing current children in foster care who are waiting adoption, and whereas, Adoption Month is an opportunity to celebrate foster and adoptive families and spread awareness on behalf of the hundreds of children in foster care in North Carolina who continue to wait for a loving, permanent family, and whereas, the state of North Carolina encourages communities, businesses, groups, schools, faith-based organizations, families, and individuals to participate in efforts to recruit permanent, loving families for North Carolina's waiting children. Now, therefore, I, Roy Cooper, Governor of the State of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim November, two thousand and eighteen, as Adoption Month in North Carolina, and commend its observance to all citizens, signed, Roy Cooper, Governor.
Okay, and certainly, uh, we should take that part, just people who take people into their homes, and give them a safe and secure place to live. Um, I, with Crystal Walt and Waga, I mentioned, mentioned this, those of you who look- mentioned this, those of you who have looked around the courthouse, we are done, the ceiling tiles in here have been replaced, it looks very nice. The walls, some painting has been done throughout the building, the walls in here have not been painted, but that's on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
But the building is looking nice, nicer. So thank you, your part more.
May I, what if I can add to the adoption and foster care sector, because yesterday we dealt with something here in Gates County involving a foster situation that Department of Social Services is not aware of, that there are foster agencies that belong and that are in North Carolina and in Gates County, foster kids that are not registered with Department of Social Services. So I'm wondering, those of us having an opportunity to maybe speak with someone and find out, at least I feel like every foster child in Gates County should be at least registered with Department of Social Services.
So this is private, private foster care?
Yes.
Who regulates that?
I wonder. DSS is registered, but this particular child, for instance, is in another county, and as we addressed that situation yesterday, it kept, kept going for quite some time, and eventually, some third folks from Greenwood came here. But our Department of Social Services is not aware that we're here. And that must be the case throughout North Carolina, I just don't see that. So, and maybe someone else can address that that might know, but there's not anyone in here. I'll certainly be addressing it with our sheriff's office as well, because transportation becomes an issue, so does other things.
I know we have two members of the Board of Social Services, Commissioner Jordan and Commissioner Felton.
Well, it sounds like, that's something we've talked, you talked to the Department of Special Services about, change of law, to the fact that if another county is dealing with children in another county, it should be communicating with that DSS board in that county, if you think.
Yes, sir. So if I may, just, and they have been here two years in our social services. That would, that would answer the question I was giving you to ask.
It's, yeah, there's, people not talking to each other.
Exactly.
And certainly that needs to, some type of regulation to, just for the safety of the child. Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we'll see what we can find out concerning that. Okay, now, if anything else under administrative reports, okay, now we want to move to the old business number that's currently named, will be number? We're going to do old business first. In a section from plan care board of adjustments being waived request, okay, if you, Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Would you like to speak just a second?
Yes. At our last meeting, we tabled this issue, and I brought it to the board, the request to waive the fee for the excessive home group to go before the board of adjustments, and request a rezoning of a house or houses, they were used as group homes. This was something that, or is something that is needed by a county, somehow residents are used homes in other counties, for special needs children, veterans or whatever. I asked the assessors and the members to be here today, maybe they would even like to speak on the benefits of this county, and the $500 waiver fee, they would have to pay in order just to get permitted to use the house in a area zone that's not zoning for group homes. It's not a guarantee that it would be changed. And I think if we're going to bring this down to this county, we should consider allowing the waiver, because I think it's very difficult to count it, if we're getting this type of service. Did you all want to speak on it?
Okay, have they been to the planner board?
Have you been to the planner board yet?
No, the Lisa can address that. She's, you've been to the planner?
Yes, they did come in, we discussed the requirements, and just, just a reminder, I'm just here to address the fee itself, not the idea. And just to remember, I fee, just the average cost of one meeting is $730, and we're requesting two parcels to be looked at. And again, budget conscious, you'll come get me next year, we go over, or spend too much, and, I mean, that's a lot for a board to meet. We have seven members to meet, and it's a fair and equitable, look at this property, and we require it of other businesses, and a fair service, cost of doing that. So I would like for you to think about just our budget and the, what we're passing on to the taxpayers to do this, is my request, just to protect and be budget conscious. But they did come and see the yes, but on the, what there was, I think in front of us, the request to waive the fee.
But just for planner board or board of adjustments?
Board of adjustments.
But that's not a resoning?
No, it's not a resoning. It's not a resoning.
Special use permit.
Yes, sir.
That's order of specialty.
I certainly understand that it costs the county to hold it. But many times, if you're going to receive a service that's a benefit to the county, then, in other words, it's, it's worth the cost. We recently waived the fee for having that identity house. Guess what? The house is going to be taxed. We're still going to bring it back. But to allow people to have that, have that for identity to come in and build a house, and basically cost, and get that house, we were willing to waive the fee. So it's not like that we're asking that there won't be any funds coming back to backfields, because that home is going to be taxed.
I just wasn't aware, I didn't give the habitat, humanity, I was peremptible, an inspection fee, that was inspection fee, not a, not a board fee, okay. It was an inspection fee that we waived.
Yeah, well, we waived.
Understand.
And it's a non-profit.
It was incorrectly, I'm like, right, okay, I'm just trying to remember myself.
Well, and I appreciate you protecting that.
And that's just my job, I'm just here to make you wait.
But I just want you to be aware, that when we ask for this thing, we're just not putting a burden on the county, because funds are going to be brought in through that entity. And it's going to backfill some of the funds that was expended in order to get it here. And I personally can appreciate group home. I've had family members that need to use those homes. Sometimes you have to take people to draw, and you got these kind of homes, and you got it. It makes a difference.
Thank you.
So I wanted to bring the board forward, that when the cessary group home, I believe is that correct name, comes before the board of adjustments, if we would allow that fee to be waived for rezoning of a group home.
And you, you own these parcels of land?
No.
So you're asking for a special use permit on land that you do not own?
That's right.
Is the owner of the land, um?
Here?
Field?
No. They know very well what we're trying to do, which is to rent the home, and then with means of buying, for after a certain period of time. These houses are for sale.
How many come steps to the, so we, if I'm here?
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Oh, I'm David, and this is Sabra.
Okay, I keep thank you for coming. Okay, so you're looking at two parcels of land?
At this point in time.
And you're going to rent these, are there, are there homes on this, this property?
Yes, they are.
Will they have to be systematically renovated?
No. At one point, one of them is already ready for the group home, but then we are looking to, as well as trying to get one of the houses for veterans here in the county. And we are looking to do the same thing over in Perkins County. This is Sutcliffe, she works in this field, and we are trying to establish a business that would help this county as well as Perkins County. We both are from Perkins County, but we're looking to open these homes, and she's been in the field for a while. And as Reverend Jordan has stated to you, we find that this is a great need for our counties as well as the citizens in the county. As he stated, that we wouldn't have to then carry our loved ones to a rest home where I am visiting extensively. I am a reverend myself, I am Reverend Hinton, and I have to visit these places, and sometimes the care there is just not suitable. But I have spent time with her at these homes, at the home that she was working, and to, it's very well kept, all the meals are prepared by her, all of the care is did by two people. She will be the caretaker in the day, and which they have to have someone there at night, all night long. And I believe that this would be a great necessity for the county as well as, it could be my relative, it could be your own, but I believe that it would be a great thing if we can get this open here in this county, as well as after we get it open here, then we're looking to move to other counties to try to help them as well. And as I did hear Reverend Jordan say a while ago, the county wouldn't lose anything by this, you would come as a great gain, because if nothing else, we still have to pay you tax money.
But taxes will be paid on property for a county.
Yes, they, yes, they are, and it still would be, as we would contribute to buy the homes.
Right, that would be equal, it, it, that would be equal, it's being paid now, you weren't paying, so that's the same.
Yes, you still own a benefit to county, but what we are mainly looking at is not the money that the county will get, it's just the services that will come to the county for your relative, my relative, or anyone that would need this service. And we find that there are great need for this, for the people, as well as veterans. And we know that one house recommends more to be done for than would for the veterans, but we have already talked with the state, we have talked with farm marshals, and we are willing to comply with all that we need to do to make this to be a success, not just for the herd, but for the county and the need for the people.
And having heard Reverend Hinton's explanation of services and the rationale behind providing services for the county, this is not something about profit or something.
Are you a nonprofit or profit?
We will be a nonprofit. I mean, what we get is just for taking care of the people. We're not looking to make a million or a mint, this is not why we are opening up the home. What we are concerned with is the care of the people. And as I stated to you, she's been in this field for a while, and the people that I see that she takes care of, they love her to death. They're really, really intrigued in what she does.
So she's already running a home?
I was working for one in the city.
Oh, you're working for one, so now you're going out on your own.
Yes, that's what we're trying to do.
What, what before up here is not, when any fees are waived, they don't disappear. Somebody's got to pay them.
Yes, sir.
And that somebody is, these people sitting out here in the audience, have to pay their fees rather than the people that are actually asking for, but they don't, do not disappear. And have you made a study on how much it's going to cost to renovate these properties that you do not own, in order to get them up to meet inspections and go?
According to the farm marshal that we spoke with here, he has given us some kind of amount that it would run from the lowest to the highest. But the thing that we are trying to do, or what we have done, is to look into, that's why we want to do the veterans as well, so, because that's on a low end versus the home that we are trying to open. We would have to find a house that is already suitable for that, in which we did that.
One question with it, that's, I'm sorry, we, what we're concerned here with is, well, we're going to ask the taxpayers to pay your fees or let you pay your fees.
Okay, right. And what we'll, what we are willing to do to help the county, if we get it waived now, according to you, that you can do that, then we would appreciate it. We know that it won't go away, and if we would have to pay for it, then we will, because it's very necessity. I find that it's a very necessity to help the county as well as the people. That's our main goal, and our concern is to help the people in this county, as well as other counties.
Um, how many people do you are insist that they be in these times? That's the rules? Take that the rules on each one?
Yes.
I think there's a law that over six is a guy on a special license, or it's a certificate or something like that.
Yes. And one more thing that I will add, that the homes will be governed by the state as well as the county, you have to govern as well. And I did speak with the farm marshal once again, he said that they have to come out, as well as a representative from the county, to inspect and make sure that everything is in line, just like the state does.
Well, yeah, I know the DSS has to go inspect like daycareers and people in private homes that do children, variety of things. Okay, any other questions? Why is the pleasure of the board?
Well, gentlemen, I would make a motion that we, when the cessary group home, find the home as suitable for group home, we come forward with adjustments to have a rezoning that we would waive the fee for having that home rezoned up to.
Special use.
For special use.
My motion has been made. Do I hear a second? Hearing no second, the motion fails. Okay. Thank you. It's not, there were, for me, it's concerning the waiving of the fees, because that sets up, you know, for others. because that sets up, you know, for others.
That's why we can finish it.
Okay.
This is not, the bench will move forward.
That's right.
But the board of adjustments, there is a fee of five hundred dollars that you all would have to pay, right, and all they have to resumme.
Yes.
But, uh, we tried to, did it waive, but it did not give it.
It's fine.
Thank you. Thank you, good luck. Okay, this time, we need a break. Uh, at this time, we will go back to number six, the public hearings. Concerning the code ordinances. Do I have a motion to enter into the public hearing?
Uh-huh. Second motion, Madam Chair.
Motion's been made, it's second to enter into the public hearing concerning, um, a code of ordinances, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, this time, do we have anyone who would like to speak to the codification of Gates County ordinances? We have codified our ordinances so that they'll be more user-friendly, that you can look it up and, um, and just make it easier for the consumer and citizens of the county. I don't see anyone rushing to speak. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go out of, uh, the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, seeing no one come to the podium to make a comment, I'll make a motion that we come out of the session, or excuse me, come out of the, uh, public hearing for code ordinance.
Uh, motion has been made, it's second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have had the public hearing, um, we have to, this, okay, now, at this, we can do it now, you're correct?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we have had a chance to look at the code ordinance, um, that has been done and codification, um, do I hear a motion that we accept that?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the code ordinances presented before us in our material today, um, that we accept that change.
My motion's been made, it's second, any other discussion?
Yes ma'am, I'd like to make the audience aware that a lot of detail and time went into this, um, and part of our reasoning for doing it was, as you stated, to make it user-friendly, have it on the website, and to make all sections of it, uh, work within each other.
Can I clarify?
Yes.
Are you, you're approving the ordinance to enact the code ordinances?
Yes ma'am. If you want to make my motion, if you want to type my motion up that way, go ahead.
Um...
Thank you, Lord.
And, uh, as I said, the very back, and certainly, uh, I thank those of you, you go online, you can see it, uh, but it has, it says very easy to ascertain where you need to go to get the information. So, a big plus, and thank, um, the staff for all the work they've done on this. Okay, motion's been made, the second has been done, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, and certainly, I know we'll move on now to new business, we have a couple of items surplus, okay, ma'am?
There is a copier that gets metal needs, and we're asking that it be surplus, and so on glove deals.
Okay. Why is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that we approve for any additional stuff.
Okay.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Motion's been made, it's second to put the copier from gets, um, on glove dot deals, and any additional comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. Resolution for reimbursement.
This is the same resolution that you passed back in September to reimburse the general fund and the enterprise fund for monies that have been transferred from the West Water Project. We neglected to do that for the money that was moved back in September, which also was close to a million dollars, so we are asking that this reimbursement resolution be approved for to move four hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred sixty back to the general fund, four hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred sixty back to the enterprise fund, once all bills have been paid, from the West Water Project.
Okay, you have heard the county manager's statement, why is the pleasure of the board? These will be reimbursed to us when we get our monies from North Carolina grant and EBA, we've got some from the EBA already.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the revolution for reimbursement. And I will second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion's been made, it's second to, uh, go back to reimbursement of expenditures of the West Water Expansion Project, um, any questions for discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, budget amendment.
Okay, number nineteen, and just so you'll know that Kim Altman would have been here today to present this, but she is in class at the School of Government, in case you were wondering. Budget Amendment nineteen is to reallocate fund balance to reimburse the Department of Public Safety for Genesis grant that was not spent in fiscal year eighteen in the amount two hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Okay, and this is bringing forward funds, bringing forward funds.
Correct, fund, fund balance to repay Department of Public Safety.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion we approve, uh, budget revision number nineteen.
My, my motion's been made, it's second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number twenty is to pull three thousand fifty-eight dollars from general fund balance to pay Gates County Rescue and EMS for Hurricane Florence staffing per the agreement.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that, uh, budget revision number twenty be approved. I'll second that.
Motion's been made, it's second to approve the amendment for, um, reallocation funds to the rescue squad, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Budget amendments twenty-one through twenty-four are each for additional grant funds that have been received by emergency management, the first one is an additional five thousand dollars for the home security grant for tabletop exercise, twenty-two is seven thousand seven hundred fifty for hazard mitigation, the twenty-three is to allocate funds to purchase a portable shelter, and twenty-four is to purchase some fund cases.
Okay, I think we can take all these, because all of them are the same grant that allocated to different areas.
No, all of them are not actually the exact same grant, but they are all different grant funds that we've just received.
Okay. So we just still feel a lot of...
Correct.
Uh, budget amendments twenty-one through twenty-four.
Yes ma'am, I serve, make a motion to combine all those motions in favor of, uh, the movement of the money. I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made, it's second to allocate funds from the...
No, it's not the, excuse me, it's not allocated, it's to receive the funds from the state.
Okay, to receive the funds from the state, I was reading the explanation. Uh, okay, uh, any other additional questions? Okay, I, so, all those in favor, uh, budget amendments twenty-one through twenty-four say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Oh, well, Billy's here. Uh, are these grants that we apply for, or does the state automatically?
No, sir, they're taking me applies to, there is a, we are represented on a committee called the Domestic Preparation Region, and we have a, a meeting every quarter for, for needs analysis. Some of this grant money that we're going to get is for other counties as well, we'll receive some, some portion of the equipment, but other counties will receive portions of the equipment as well.
And you kind of use it, I mean, if, if we need it, we can get it, draw it, be on that.
That's exactly right, a good example is during Hurricane Florence, we had a lot of our, we call it DIPR, Domestic Preparation Region, we have a lot of our DIPR equipment that was sent all throughout North Carolina, and the same would, would reciprocate should we need that.
And thank you for the work you do by getting this stuff for us.
Of phone cases.
It is a, a mobile internet connectivity device, it basically is in a case, uh, like a Pelican type case, and it receives, uh, there, there are multiple, more technical than I understand, antennas that pull cell service, and it gives you internet connectivity. Uh, we have used them on many searches, uh, we've used them in, uh, land posts, then in Fayetteville on search for Mariah Woods, and it, it took no cell service internet and made it where we were using ten, twelve computers and printers and it worked well. So it, it's a, something smarter than I am, internet thing.
How many needs that?
You're right.
Before Billy steps away, Madam Chairman, if I might, I would ask, Madam, um, this sounds like an expensive piece of equipment, um, insurance-wise, would, would our contents covered at that location, say the wind, the wind comes and blows Billy's facility away and all this stuff is lost?
I, I may add to that, that fifty-six thousand dollars, that's for multiple pieces of equipment, so one of them costs like ten thousand, not cheap in any, any sense, but it is for multiple pieces of equipment.
But we...
I mean, it's not covered, any time, any time Billy gets anything, we, we check on it, like when he got truck last year, we went to check to make sure that it was affordable for our insurance to cover that truck, that's what it is.
Good, all right.
Okay, um, and so we need to, thank you for that, and the work you do. Okay, the next item on new business is the reappointment of the Nursing Plan Community Advisory Committee, I see some of those ladies here, uh, and so, uh, Brandon Jordan has sent us a letter that she would like to, for Arlen Hicks and Margaret Wilterspoon to continue to serve on this committee, Community Advisory Committee, why is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I would, uh, make a motion that we accept the nominees for the, uh, Community Advisory Committee that's been presented to us to continue serving.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any questions or... We appreciate all the members of the committee, uh, for what they do, uh, concerning our nursing homes, their visitation, their advocacy for those, um, homes, and just many things that they do. So at this time, all those in favor of reappointing Hicks and Wilterspoon to this, uh, committee, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, well?
No, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is the information regarding the audit.
Okay, that's right.
Yesterday, the senior representative, Tim lines, who is fourth, Molly Jenkins, myself and Marie Brown tree had a long discussion about the audit, we've worked for a couple of hours, and then at the end of the day, we also added James Benz, who is a partner with Molly Jenkins. Based upon the information that's in that letter that I received about nine thirty this morning from James Benz, there is a need for additional work that we do not have the capability of doing in-house, and the previous people that we contracted with did not provide enough background information and did not do enough work in order for the alters to do what they need to do to perform our audit in essence. Uh, when I spoke with James Benz yesterday, he said that he did not know exactly how much it was going to cost, so he's provided a proposal of addition, of time needed to work on the past year's numbers, and to work on a couple of other issues that he has found that could be related to those numbers for an additional thirty-nine thousand dollars. This would be outside of the audit contract that was approved previously and that has been approved by the LGC. And if approved, then we will also need to do a budget amendment to move this money from fund balance.
Okay, um, we have to get our financial... In order, uh, and we have had a lot of turnover in the last couple of years in that department, and so I don't think we have much choice.
And if you have specific questions, we can recess, and I can go, um, let's see what time it's, get Tim lines, he said that he would be available if you have specific questions, James Benz may or may not be available right at this moment for a conference call, but Tim said he would be available if he had very specific questions.
We're supposed to, would this get us up to a position that we could start from that day and go on and take care of everything in-house?
No, there are still going to be some things that we perhaps cannot do in-house because we do not have enough people to do some of the things that the alters in the past had been doing that they were not supposed to be doing for us, so we might still, um, may have to contact with someone to do a few items that the alters are not supposed to do for us, but that we do not have someone who can do it, but then we would be ready for next year's audit earlier than what we were this year.
And, um, we now have reconciling, I must, to, well, everything is reconciled.
Right.
And we, I must can, we'll reconcile weekly, if not daily.
But this will bring us up to a point where everything prior to this will be taken care of.
Correct.
Comes up next May, become a next...
Correct.
Okay, any additional questions?
I see that, uh, this audit is based on quite a few issues that we have internally, and, uh, I would hope that, uh, that we're chopping that up and then ensure that those kind of things that happen, we're trying to prevent them from happening again regarding from that.
Oh, believe me, we have, and as Ms. Ossler alluded, that's what happens when we do not have a finance officer who has, who has been here for many years and knows the ins and outs as well as what they have in the past, so yes, we learn, and the good thing with this audit firm coming in is they are familiar with our new financial system, and they've already shared a few little insights into that new system that we are going to be using and utilizing and trying to improve on using that, even, uh, Kristy Brown made the statement during the personnel board that this past month was the first month that she was the most comfortable using the software, because some of it between February and June were also related to software, her, learning her.
And they, they're very familiar with the Edmund software, so they are helping them...
Correct.
Uh, yeah, also being able to get reports that we need and everything else, and I believe Mrs. Island is in a school...
She's at class this week.
Yeah, this week. So I think it's, things are looking up.
Certainly, our officers would recognize that, plus they would know the figure they could charge them to.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, and approve the, uh, the figures furnished monetarily from the auditors for purposes of admission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, it's second to appropriate thirty-nine thousand dollars for, to the alters... Motion's been made, is second, to appropriate thirty-nine thousand dollars for, to the auditors, uh, for additional help. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Well, you do not have a budget amendment in front of you. If you would prefer that I hand you a hard copy, you can recess for a few minutes so I can print it, type it up in print, or we could do budget amendment twenty-five, which would move thirty-nine thousand dollars from general fund balance into the audit line of the administrative staff's expenditure line for thirty-nine thousand.
I think we can take care of that at the present time, not having to wait, I mean, okay, budget amendment twenty-five.
Twenty-five, two, take.
Take thirty-nine from general funds to put in, uh, Finance Administration.
What's amendment number twenty-five?
Yeah, B twenty-five, yes, sir. And I cannot do it here because I do not have access to that file. That's why I said if you wanted a paper copy, I'd have to go to my office to do it.
I think we can handle that one.
You can email that, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Okay, a motion has been made, and do I have a second? Second, uh, any additional discussions? All those in favor of Amendment twenty-five, thirty-nine thousand from general fund to Finance Administration, flying item. Um, just take care of all the concerns, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. I believe that concludes the new business. Um, comments, citizens' comments? No one signed up. Okay, starting at the end of the table with Commissioner Freeman. Um, congratulations to Commissioner Freeman and Mr. Owens on their reelection to the board. And I believe we have Commissioner-elect Jonathan James in the, that's the easier seat. When you cross over, it gets a little hard. Okay, Commissioner Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, certainly want to, uh, thank all of our citizens for participating in the voting process and recognizing, uh, the needs for the county. Also want to regret, congratulate, uh, all the, the victors, and also the others that participated in that one. We, uh, we do sit here making decisions. We also accept those decisions from years of our citizens. And we thank you for bringing those forward to us.
I appreciate everybody coming out today, and I just want to remind everybody that Sunday, November, the Veterans' Veterans' Day, and historical society will be putting on a program here that we normally do for the veterans at three o'clock on Sunday afternoon, and I hope you would encourage all of your family, veterans and friends to come out and be recognized, and also bring any family members that you want to bring with you to, to support these veterans, and just let them know that they are appreciated and all of their sacrifices have been appreciated. And I too want to thank everyone for coming and, and thank you for all of you. And I congratulate my colleagues on their victories, and, uh, we know that you have served well. And we got you to have a blessed day.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, congratulations again, Commissioner Freeman. And, uh, Jonathan Jones, congratulations, as well as, uh, the other folks who were victorious in their campaigns who are not here with us today. But, um, you know, we talk about participation in democracy by people coming here to the podium and speaking, whatever. The citizens participated very well yesterday, did a great turnout, and that really says a lot about the county. You know, that they are paying attention, and they are engaged, uh, if, you know, and a lot of them working can't be here as often as they might would like to be, but on yesterday's day, uh, they spoke very well. And, uh, and I look forward to, uh, serving as Commissioner for Gates County for the next four years. Thank you again.
I too like to, uh, thank citizens of the county, but the participation in the election, I think, had over forty-nine percent of the registered voters voting, and that's a high, very high turnout, this being a non-presidential year. Uh, certainly, the turnout was great, and now it's a way for you to have your voice in government. One way you can have your voice in government, and all ways, come to the meetings, uh, take part in the, uh, general comments, and we certainly would invite anyone to come and participate there as well. And as, um, Commissioner Felton said, it is the state weekend coming up, you know, people tell them we got a day off, but we would have a day off on Monday because of the sacrifices that people have made over generations so that we can live in a country that is free. Typically, we have our service at eleven o'clock because Augustus was on November eleventh, eleventh month, eleventh hour, uh, but because that is church, will happen in the afternoon. Have a good history lesson here. But anyway, uh, I hope you can come out and to honor the veterans, um, that certainly deserve, uh, heartfelt, uh, praise and for what they have done for this country. Uh, thank you, I think we have done well this morning, um, not a record, uh, so to speak, but we've had some very weighted issues that we need to take time and to consider. And it is, it's sometimes a very difficult decisions that we have to make, but we try to do what we think is best for all the citizens of the county at all times. Um, take care, we meet again on Monday, November the nineteenth, at seven o'clock. So, tell your neighbors to come. At this time, we will adjourn. Oh, yeah, we need a motion. I was going to, yeah.
Move, move.
A motion's been made, is second, all those in favor say aye. Uh, we adjourn.